Good evening, folks. It's Monday, February 26, 2018. We're at the Bennington Select Board meeting for that date, for that state. We're at the firehouse and our agenda is pretty heavy tonight. I'm Tom Jacobs and we have a Select Board composed of, and I'll start down here with Chad.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, I'm Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Carson Therbure.
Gene Connor.
And Stuart.
And I'm Stuart Hurr, Town Manager.
Great. And to your right?
Jim Calkeen, Superintendent of the SBS.
Great, thanks, Jim. And Nancy Lively and Renee Gordon, who happens to be the opposite poll. You'll notice they're tan, I won't say anything more than that. Must be you had off last week. Congratulations wherever you were. We missed you. In a cold miserable time of, anyway. As is our custom, we start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. Jeannie, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. We have the consent agenda, that is in the packet. We have the minutes of, it says February 5th. I thought there were more minutes than that. Were there?
There are three. There's an addendum.
I'm sorry. I think I've picked up the wrong. I've got it. I've got it right here. The minutes of February 5th, February 12th, and the addendum to the February 12th meeting.
February 12th, sorry.
Okay. So there's three items of minutes that we have to deal with under the consent agenda, and also the warrants which have been circulated. I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any questions, comments, or otherwise? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda. Signify by aye.
Aye.
That's seven of us in favor and no opposition. As is our practice, we have reserved 15 minutes for citizens' comments and we have a sign-up sheet that's been provided. This is for items that are not on our agenda for the evening and still allow comments and a conversation as appropriate. Joel Linsner. Joel, you're up first. Good evening, Joel.
Hello. I'm Joel Linsner from the Downtown Bennington Alliance. I have a question. I guess we're looking for a little bit of clarity about the process for the downtown improvement district funding requests each year. There seems to be one way that it specifies in the town charter, another way that we've done it historically, and another way that seems to be suggested in a document that you're being asked to sign later tonight, the Community Reinvestment Agreement, which seems to channel the money directly to one organization every year. So I guess we're looking for a little clarity about what the actual process is.
Sure. I'm going to allow Stu to share that because it has been your practice and how we go about timing and everything.
Well, yes. The district funding, or the funding to the designated contractor, has most often been held in May. Up until, I think it was a year ago, we moved it back to where the budget was being determined. You all wanted to get a bigger picture of the budget, so we brought the Bennington Downtown Association in during the budget process. This year, because of the workload that we've been carrying through this particular timeframe, after conversations with the Chair and Vice Chair, we've pushed that discussion back until April. And we will have the presentation by the BDA. And DBA is also making a request for funds, and that will be handled at a regular Select Board meeting or at a work session, depending on what the Board decides, at that time. This particular item on the agenda, currently, the BDA is our designated downtown authority, and therefore, because this must be renewed in March of 2018, we are asking them to support the reapplication for the downtown designation. It really has nothing to do with the funding of the district entities. It has to do with whether or not the downtown gains the designation of a designated downtown.
Stu, I've got a question for you. And just for a point of clarification, is what you're telling me is that, you know, the funds that have been set aside go to one organization?
At the present time, they do.
So there's no opportunity for competition?
Yeah. Yeah, that's basically why we're having this work session or a special meeting, maybe an agenda meeting, so that the parties that would like to act as our agent, lack what better, will have the opportunity to present. And prior to that time, I would expect that the Board will have their, the budget request amount, the financials from the organization, their corporate charters and all of those types of things, so that we know an entity that is coming before us, they have the ability and can recognize to do that kind of thing.
In order to present competing ideas?
Yes.
Well, and in fact, they don't necessarily have to be competing.
No, can be just additional.
Exactly.
It can be additional funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, the way that the DBA sees what we're doing is complementary very much to what the BDA/BBC is doing, and completely support them being the designated downtown entity. Think that that's an important role that they play in the town. But the role that we're playing, the things that we've done, we see really complements their mission. So, we're looking forward to explaining that more in April.
Good. Look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Jeff Grimshaw.
You're getting a two for.
Oh, that's fine. Sam Rustino is also here. Jeff Grimshaw, man of many hats in Bennington. Hi, Jeff and Sam. Sam Rustino of Bennington as well. First hat I put on tonight is my Sun Vermont Storm hat. I'd like to thank the entire town of Bennington, Stu, Dan, Jim, of course, and everyone involved in having any kind of voice to allow us to play our home season here in Bennington. We're very, very, very happy and very proud to be here, and there's been a great response. We have sponsors actually coming in over the transom, and we have to kind of make product exclusivity arrangements. So thank you again. If anyone wants to sponsor, you may reach us at SouthernVTStorm3@gmail.com. I take off that hat now. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Crass Promo Number Two, and that is Wednesday night at Mount Anthony Country Club. We will be presenting Southern Vermont today. We'll be presenting the Fireside Forum. It's a free-form conversation, very unlike anything you've ever seen as a debate, and, you know, there, I could give you the rules, but there aren't any real rules. People are going to talk about the issues today in Bennington and what we face tomorrow. It's going to be real interesting. You can watch it on Southern Vermont today, and you can also be there. It's going to be in the south dining room, and they have a nice fireplace, and that's why we're calling it the Fireside Forum. What time is that again, Jeff? That's at 7:00 PM.
On the 28th.
That's Wednesday. I will advise Messrs. Campbell and Jim, be on your toes. Is this a forum or a debate, or what is the nature? It is a lively conversation. Conversation, okay. We like conversations.
I think Donald's looking at me like, "What have you got in mind?"
I hear my mother call.
Ah, it's going to be fun, okay? It's going to be fun and informative. Okay, last piece of business. And I will take this to the Chair, because it concerns the Chair, the big Chair here in Bennington. I wanted to update everyone on our efforts to save and keep the big Chair here in Bennington. We have $750 banked at GoFundMe.com. Anyone who would like to donate, you can go to GoFundMe.com/saveTheBigChair. We've got another 200 coming in checks. Those are committed checks. So we're approaching the $1,000. Just a couple of questions that people have. If you're not up to speed on this, the Chair is being sold at auction on March 17th. We would hate to see it go out of town. We think this is a venerable Bennington icon. How far is the reach? Well, let me tell you, we've got a donation from Clearwater, Florida. How you like that? We got one from New Jersey. How do you like that? And we have a mature, spry woman from North Bennington who called me today and asked how she could donate. So...
We've got donation jars coming.
Donation jars are coming, and we're going to talk to businesses and see if they want to do that. So this thing has got some legs. It's already had, the Banner picked it up, of course, Southern Vermont launched it today, launched it. Channel 10 in Albany picked it up. We think this has, this story has a charm to go national. We really do. And we're going to try and push it nationally. Okay? So, and this isn't a bad thing for Benning. This is about Bennington saying, hey, these are, this is an asset, we want to keep it. And that, those are always great stories. So with that, oh, I should mention, on March 11th, Sunday, we're going to have a big Chair-a-thon down there, live on Southern Vermont today. So look for a couple of guys, kooky guys, right on the corner there. With that, I will ask anyone and everyone, what can I put you down for? What's going to happen to the Chair if you were fortunate enough to get the? That's, okay, I should mention that. Those are the two compelling questions. If we do not acquire the Chair, all monies will be refunded. Okay? Number two, what if we go over the, we had to pick a number, and it was $10,000, and it was, because you just don't know these things. If we say, what if you go over the $10,000? Well, we would use those funds to maintain the Chair, because you might acquire it, but you've got to maintain it. And it has to be moved. So when I say, what can I put you down for, perhaps the town could assist in the moving of the Chair, should we acquire it? Perhaps they might match our funds, or a percentage of our funds. Perhaps not. So I will reiterate the question. What can I put you down for?
Jeff, would you be willing to gift it to the town?
Yeah. Absolutely. It should belong to the town. It has been part of the town. The woman in North Bennington said, "I've been passing that Chair for 50 years." I don't, I would not like to not pass it anymore. Does anyone up here have any comments about the Chair? Carson?
Are the contents being sold and the real estate, or just the contents at this point?
At this point, just the contents.
Okay. I was asking because I didn't know if the building and the property was going the same day.
No.
No.
That's forthcoming, possibly.
I want to cover one thing, Jeff, if you don't mind.
Please do.
With respect to Southern Vermont Storm using Lower Willa, there have been some concerns, even accusations that have been leveled with respect to Lower Willa being an unsafe place for the games. And I got this directly from Larry McLeod, and he told me that the EPA, the federal EPA, as well as the Vermont Department of Agency of Natural Resources, has given a clean bill of health with respect to any surface contamination. And currently, what people need to know is that Grace Christian School uses that for their athletic field, as well as the Mount Anthony lacrosse and soccer teams, and an untold number of car shows that have also been on that field. And Larry has told me that there have been no complaints, no, no, I don't know how else to put it, but the EPA, neither the EPA or the Agency of Natural Resources has made any objection to the use of that field, so I want to put that to rest.
Well, thank you. That's very reassuring. Back to the Chair. I guess my feeling would be too good or bad to rely upon the recommendation of the manager in the office, Department of Highways, because I think there's going to be a big expense, potentially, to move this to a place, and before we even decide on that, you'd have to find out where it was going to go.
That's why I asked who owns, if the real estate's selling. I mean, perhaps it could just stay right where it is.
Let me speak to that for just a moment, just so, because we look at this as, the Chair, as revenue-producing indirectly, and here's what I mean by that. The chances of someone stopping and making a purchase while rolling through Bennington, if they're from outside Bennington, while remaining in their cars while the car is in motion, I think are pretty much absolute zero. Would you guys agree with that? A purchase from a retailer in downtown Bennington?
You could hit the drive-through at Dunkin' Donuts.
That's not downtown. Is that part of the downtown?
It would be dangerous, yes.
I know, I know. Okay. Very, very low, you know? Okay, astronomically low. If, if the Chair were, say, in Merchants Park, and then it's, it traffic parks to see it, and kids get out of the car, and you had some kind of marketing effort where, take a selfie, put it on social media, take it to a participating business, get 10% off your, your purchase, would that facilitate more or less commerce in Bennington? So the question is, can it actually help rather than drain? Could be. That's all I can say. I really don't have a real fine definitive opinion on the value of that. It could well be the best thing since sliced bread, but I just don't want to have the, suggest, at least my opinion, that the town either makes a donation or otherwise without getting more information on where this is going and what has to be, to make that happen. I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions.
Yeah. Let's think it, let's think it through, not shoot from the hip, make a good decision.
I mean, other members, I defa, you know, certainly defer to you guys. Okay. Thank you. I thank you for your time, and I will close with GoFundMe.com/saveTheBigChair, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we are going to have the final hearing on the Applegate Biomass Project. I think, Zirwan, you're on board. You get to stay on deck because you've got the Community Reinvestment Agreement afterwards. So we'll deal with that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have here with me Stephanie Wayne, Executive Director of Shires Housing.
How are you doing?
How are you? We're here to talk a little bit about, well, really provide a kind of summary report of the Applegate, the Applegate Project. So the town of Bennington, as my memo explained, received $350,000 from the Vermont Community Development Program, which is administered by the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. And the grant allowed Applegate to, or Shires through Applegate to rehabilitate and make energy improvements to a 104-unit mixed-income property at 250 Applegate Drive. So Stephanie's going to tell us a little bit more about what happened over the course of this project and some of the project outcomes that we actually also have to report to the State. So mainly, this is both to update the community on what we're done with those funds, as well as, you know, this is kind of our due diligence in reporting to the State about the conclusion of the grant.
And we've heard about this in a couple of different times, so this is sort of the wrap-up?
Yes, definitely. This is it. Great. We're going to close this out now.
Great. Thanks, go ahead, Steph.
We actually completed construction in August of '17 and are fully leased up now. We still have a few vacancies, but met our, our goals for lease-up with our funders back in November. We have done, we've accomplished a great deal at Applegate. We pulled out 29 oil-burning furnaces and replaced them with one centralized biomass, wood chip burning plant, which is pretty amazing, and also included the infrastructure to be able to do that. All of the 23 buildings, residential buildings, have been insulated, have had Blue Skin, have been air-sealed, have been sided, new roofs, you know, new pathways in some cases. And we achieved, we actually surpassed our goal for air changes per minute for the, for the buildings, and so that was really huge for us. We weren't sure, you know, when you go into this and you use a new product like Blue Skin, which is for air sealing, you don't know what's going to happen, and it was worth the risk. So this has been really a tremendous undertaking, but went very well, was very successful. Smooth construction, it was occupied rehab, as you know, so that has its challenges, but I think, you know, we worked with a great contractor and a lot of great subs, and our property management staff made it work. And it was difficult, but we did get through it.
I want to say one thing, and, you know, I've harped on this for years now about using local contractors.
Absolutely.
And during the, during the time that this was going on, I went over to check. And I was very pleased to see that most of the contractors and subcontractors were in fairly close proximity to the town of Bennington, because what's really important to me is that we keep that money local.
Absolutely.
And I want to compliment you on, you gave your word a year ago that you would do your best to that, and I want to compliment you and thank you for keeping your word.
Thank you. And you'll see more of that on, on other projects. We do our best to incorporate local contractors.
Oh, you'll hear from me.
And we had JTG Hayden contracting on this. We had a lot of locals and local insurance agents, so we make it a point.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I apologize, you had an open house that we were invited to, and I think there's an open invitation to see the end product, and I'll make sure that I visit because I think it's pretty impressive, both for the dollar amount of the grant and the use of it. So it's exciting, and I'll make sure I follow up. Maybe others that haven't had that chance.
Love to see it, yeah.
Other questions before we, do we, is there a further formal, or is this just like a wrap-up?
It's mainly to open it up, you know, to you for questions, to the audience, any questions, comments, feedback.
The tenants are comfortable, more comfortable than before?
The tenants are comfortable, yes. Construction was tough. I mean, it was 14 months, you know, disturbing their life and going into their apartments, and, you know, the contractors were great and working with them, but everybody has just so much patience, and eventually it ran out. But we did very well, and we couldn't have done it without their cooperation. They are more comfortable now. The units are air-sealed, they're comfortable. There are some brand-new units that are handicapped accessible, and for the units that didn't have the extensive rehab inside, we're doing that now as we turn them over. So, yes, they'll be much more comfortable now.
I'm sure all the questions that we have will revolve around dollar and whether or not you're going to show real savings to the organization for this, as well as the benefit of the?
Yes, absolutely. We were one of the biggest fuel consumers at that complex in Bennington. They were using approximately 100,000 gallons of oil per year, and we're using about a ton of wood chips a day right now, and that's actually a little less than we thought. So we're on target, even better than target.
What's the cost comparison?
Cost, it's hard to compare the cost, and we won't know for a full year. When we cycle for a full year, we'll be able to tell you where we'll land and how the emissions were and things like that. But a ton of wood chips are costing us about $219 right now. So I think in the long run, we're going to beat oil by far, absolutely. And we do have a backup system as well in that, in that project, because, you know, it's glitchy at first when you put a new system in. And also, what if we can't get chips? Or what if there's a malfunction in the boiler? You just don't know. So we have a main backup that can handle the entire complex and can do whatever that primary boiler does.
And as far as fuel efficiency, I've got a friend of mine who has a wood burner in North Bennington, and it burns at 93% efficiency with almost no...
Maintenance.
Well, emissions, no emissions into...
Right, yes.
Can you have it, do you have any?
It's pretty close. I think it's a little bit lower than that, but it's pretty close. And it's had a few glitches and, you know, getting used to, the maintenance has been getting used to it, but I think we should be, we expect to be up there.
But as far as emissions?
Yes. Yeah. And, and cleaning is simple. If you pull out a pant, you wouldn't believe, you know, it's just a little bit of dust that comes out after you do it, and it's really pretty amazing.
Supply of your wood chips and the like, is that a challenge, or is that going to be a challenge?
We hope not, but we do have a backup system, and it ever is. Right now, rolling is our supply for that, rolling energy. We would like to go to maybe Vermont Renewable or someone closer, but right now, they're the only ones that have the technology to do the reverse vacuum up into the silo. So it's the delivery method, not the chips themselves. And we can burn pellets as well, but right now, we're burning wood chips.
Is there much of a competitive market with respect to?
To the product?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some, but it's the delivery that has us a bit captive right now, but we expect to see others with this technology soon, because that's, that's a long way to go for, for wood chips.
Very good.
That's great stuff.
Other questions from the Board?
I have one, a little off-topic. We have some representatives from the school here, but we've mentioned in previous meetings the pathway through Willow Brook. Will that be completed for the start of next school year?
Ah, I don't know if it'll be for next school year, but it's still something that is in the plans and in the works. Yes.
Very close.
We should have it in the next couple of weeks. They come in on the budget, it'll definitely be done by August.
Full disclosure, I'm on the Board of Shires, so I know a little bit about this project. Would it be appropriate for you to talk about the basements and the thermostats?
Um, well, the thermostats, we, we did switch out the thermostats because this is an energy rehab, and we, it was a huge expenditure to make sure that those buildings were airtight and that they would be comfortable and warm for the tenants. We have changed out the thermostats to a light stat thermostat, but disabled the light feature, strangely enough, and have actually put a, you may call it a governor, on the thermostats. So in past years, they were able, tenants could, you know, put the heat as high as they wanted. They can open the windows in the wintertime, and we, because this is an energy rehab, you know, we felt we needed to, to put an end to that. So we have put a maximum temperature on the units.
Of what? What's the maximum?
Maximum right now is 71, and if you, which is well above code, and if you, if we have a senior or someone who has a special need, I have at least 10 on a shelf that are programmed higher, and we can switch it out very easily for them if they need a little more heat in their unit. There's no harm.
Anything else, Jean? Carson?
No.
Jim? This is a public hearing to satisfy the requirements of the State, so is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question of either of the presenters? Hearing none. Thanks for the update, and I'll make sure I make an appointment to swing by and see the project, and thanks for all you do.
Anytime. Thank you.
You're right on deck.
I would also just quickly like to add that one thing in particular that's worth repeating with regards to the Applegate Biomass Grant, that, is that, you know, this kind of commitment to an energy project is within our town plan, and it's not only complimentary to it, but really, you know, embodies and kind of emblematises it. So I think we really should commend Shires Housing. And I know that on day three of the job, I got to meet Stephanie for the State's monitoring visit at the facility, and they were completely blown away by what Shires has done at this project, so.
That's great. Thanks, it's really important. You were, we hear that, and that the plan has those bullets, and that's right up at the top. The next item on our agenda is the Community Reinvestment Agreement. This is something that's, it requires it annually now? Zirwan?
So the renewal happens every five years, and I brought it up, I think, the first time in November or December.
That's okay.
Which is when we began our application and submitted the first round of our application. And the application itself, the final draft is due on Monday, I believe, and the Vermont Downtown Board is meeting in Bennington on March 26th to evaluate all the applications that it's receiving this year. So it's great because we can actually not only make our case for the downtown renewal, but also really showcase our downtown, both to the Downtown Board and to other downtown communities from Vermont.
Right.
But any particular questions that you might have?
Just what I was going to ask, any particular questions relative to this application? It's pretty specifically outlined, but feel free to ask, Zirwan, any questions you might have on it.
You disrenewed.
I hope so.
I think it's time to renew, otherwise we're not going to be able to get it renewed, and I think it's important that we also understand that disrenewal doesn't just mean you've got a certificate. you've got a certificate that goes on the wall. It makes it possible for other grant applications that the state might offer, or even through the federal, state programs. And absent that designation, we could not be in a position to apply for or receive.
Absolutely. And just, you know, just to name a few projects, you know, the electric charging vehicle stations, those are from the Downtown Transportation Fund. The Park at 336, which is an incipient project, is funded by that, by grants from the Downtown Program as well. John is here, so he can probably name some of the other projects that happened before my time. But certainly even the tax increment financing district was, we were only eligible to apply for it because we had a designated downtown.
Great.
Question?
Other questions? Carson?
Are any chargers charged on the two that are in the Plaza Street block the last five years?
In the last, I don't have a number off the top of my head, I'm afraid, but I can certainly look that up.
I do know that I charge there and.
You were charging there this morning when he went by? Was it?
No, that wasn't me.
Oh, it was someone else?
No. But sometimes both chargers are full there. Less often than behind the town office.
Sorry, I didn't know if you were asking for a specific number.
I didn't even know there was one there.
Yeah.
I usually cycle, but I have noticed in the winter, now that I'm driving, that I can almost never park in one of those spots because.
Joe, where is it placed?
Right there, so we have a bus station.
Those ones.
Can you Google it and find it, do you know?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a sign.
Yeah, and they show up on the apps, which we are actually just renewing right now.
I guess I was thinking, I was thinking of the, at the town office. There is a station too, I believe, right? Okay. Questions?
No questions. I think it would be for the record to have the board make a motion to support the application. We've already began circulating the list for signatures.
Okay. You've already seen or heard, it's in the packet, it's stated there, that I have a motion to proceed with the reinvestment agreement application.
Second, Jim's motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Seven in favor and no opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zirwan.
And now for primetime, big part of the game tonight. The Red Sox did sign J.D. today.
He did sign. First, I was saying good evening, and I want to thank the board, select board, and I want to thank the town manager, assistant town manager for including us and giving us this opportunity to discuss our finances. So thank you. I'm joined here this evening by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Donna Lee, the Superintendent Director of the Creative Development Center, Mike Lawler, and the Business Manager of the Creative Development Center, Stephanie Mulligan. Across the room, patiently waiting for her presentation is the SBSU Director of Finance and Operations, Renee Gordon. Also joined here this evening, we have Tim Holbrook, who is the MAU Board Chair, and Nelson Brunel, who is the SBSU Chair and also a member of the MAU Board. I want to thank Donna Colley, the Principal of Monument, for coming here this evening. And all of our BSD Board Member, Dan Munz, either. So thank you for attending.
Thank you for all for coming in.
A couple of highlights I want to talk about, just because we decided today that we want to get to the quick points first and then get into the nitty-gritty. The BSD budget, Financial School District budget, is up 3.2%, which is about $400,000. Bulk of that, $300,000, is the impact of the first bond payment from the energy construction project. So the bulk of that increase, 300,000, the 400,000 increases there. The MAU budget is down 3.59% from last year. The savings coming and changes in the health insurance that was negotiated by the school board and the teachers, all the school boards and the teachers and support staff associations, along with anticipated savings in some special education costs which have been diminished.
How much is that, Jim? I'm sorry, you might have said.
It's down 3.59%.
Okay.
So the impact on the tax rate is 2.34 cents. And how we get to all of that is the presentation that SBSU Director of Finance and Operations, Renee Gordon, is about to show us. Thank you.
Good evening. So I will try not to bore you with my oral too much, but this is what we do. So here we just have some images of our educational facilities in Bennington. The first one there in the corner, the white building, you may not be familiar with, but that is our early education program on the corner of Division Street, Division and County. We have a picture there of Bennington Elementary School with the new facade of windows that was part of the energy projects. Next to that, Monument Elementary. And then down at the bottom, we have the middle school, high school, and the CDC. And this is a statement of a combined vision of what the SBSU is committed to in developing lifelong learners who contribute to their community and succeed in a diverse and evolving global society. This is just an illustration of our student enrollment over the past couple of years and the projection that we have for next year. As you can see, there have been some variations over the years, but things are leveling And then to jump into the numbers. So some of the considerations are high points to mention about our FY19 budget for both the BSD and Mount Anthony. Because we had two collective bargaining agreements under negotiations last year, so they were settled. We know what the impact of those agreements are. And on average, it's about a 3% increase in salaries. And we've also budgeted that same amount for all of the non-unionized employees. As Mr. Holkeen mentioned, we do have the first principal payment coming in FY19 for the BSD. It is about $300,000, which is making up about 3/4 of the increase that we're seeing in that budget. Offsetting that increase, as well as a major contributing factor to the decrease in the Mount Anthony budget, is the one-time savings that we're seeing with the new health plans. So we have high deductible health plans that went into effect as of January 1. We're all still trying to figure them out and get used to them, but they have offered savings. The premiums were approved at the DFR, the Department of Financial Regulation of the State. So we knew those ahead of time, they were approved at those rates, and so we've got those worked into the budget as we have here. And then another point to mention is that we have some funding changes similar to what we had for this current year. Local money, or money that comes into our local districts offsets our expenses, which helps reduce our tax impact. Well, this year, the income that used to come in from special education has transferred and is now received by the Supervisory Union. We apply the estimated revenue to the expenses, and then we reduce the assessment. So it really is a wash, but when you just look at the bottom line, it's showing a decrease. Similarly, what's happening next year is that the state transportation aid is currently being received by the local districts. It's about 50% of our transportation to and from school is going to transfer over to the SU. So therefore, that's actually adding to the reduction of our budgets. But we do have the offsetting revenue reduction as well. So to jump right into the BSD expenditures, buildings and grounds portion, covering our staff and maintenance, we do have $50,000 budgeted in here to continue with the window replacements in Benel. Administration includes not only the Office of the Building Principals and Secretaries, but also, we have proposed a new receptionist at Benel. This also includes assessments from the SBSU, the administrative assessments, costs associated with the Board of Education, Office of the Treasurer, as well as our debt, as included in that administration wedge. Student support services includes all of our schools' libraries, librarians, the nurses, as well as our guidance and counseling services. Special education costs for BSD are increasing by about $70,000 for FY19. No staffing changes there, but that is mainly attributable to some anticipated changes in basically supporting our students and some out-of-district or residential placements and associated costs of transportation with that. And then everything else is kind of the catch-all of our classroom teachers, including our music, our P.E., art. This also includes after-school programs, summer school, kinder camp, and our transportation. So the overall budget for the Bennington School District is about $13.7 million, which is an increase of 3.2%. And then the offsetting revenue, as you can see in that smaller inset I have there, the local income, very small 1% wedge, is some rental income, some interest, and very small amounts of forest revenue and impact aid. The fund balance is surplus from previous years that we are using to offset the costs of next year. And then you can see the largest part of that pie is the Vermont Education Fund, also referred to as the General State Support Grant. So if you ever go to the website and look at the detail on our budgets, it'll be labeled as GSSG or General State Support Grant. The terms are used interchangeably. The Vermont Education Fund is comprised of a few different pots of money. One of them is just a transfer into the Ed Fund from the General State Fund. We also have money that comes in from sales and use tax, as well as purchase and use tax and the state lottery. About 40% of that makeup is from our non-residential homestead, I'm sorry, not homestead, but non-residential property taxes. And then the remaining, about a quarter, would be the homestead tax rates. So the non-residential is anything that's a property that is not declared as a homestead. And then moving on to Mount Anthony, similarly looking at the expenditures, buildings and grounds, this is covering, again, all the personnel, maintenance and upkeep of the buildings. There are more capital improvements, projects slated for Mount Anthony for next year. At the middle school, they're looking to continue and complete the parking lot upgrades, as well as install a sound system in the cafeteria for assemblies that are held there. The acoustics aren't great, so to include a sound system there would be helpful for those events. At the high school, they're looking to do another section of roof replacements that may end up being pushed off to the back burner. There has been a notice need for an improved phone system. The phone system that's there is very aged, not necessarily reliable all the time, and there aren't enough extensions to accommodate all the staff in the building. So those are some of the capital improvements that we're looking at. The athletics and activities budget, about 3/4 of a million dollars and no major changes planned there. Administration, similar, comprised of the offices of the principals and secretaries, as well as the SBSU administrative assessments, Board of Ed, Treasurer, and so on. Special education services are decreasing next year by about half a million dollars. And again, this is just the actual converse of what's happening in BSD, is that we had students that were in an out-of-district placement or residential placement who have left the district. So we've seen the reduction in the costs associated with that. Student support services here, again, include our libraries, nurses' offices, guidance and counseling, as well as our security team and school resource officer at the middle school. And then everything else comes in $13 million for the general instruction, which includes $2.1 million to the CDC for tuition. So the overall budget expenditures are $25.8 million, which is a decrease of almost a million dollars over this year's budget. So it's down 3.59%.
Twenty-five.
And again, similarly, fund balance is helping to offset the taxes. There's a little bit more other revenue in Mount Anthony, greater rental income from the CDC, as well as new rental that we're going to be assessing to the Supervisory Union for the use of the building on Congress Street for the On Point Elementary Program. We also have things such as the gate receipts for the athletic events, which is another source of revenue. So the draw on the Ed Fund for Mount Anthony is about 91%. So the graphs that I have here are showing you equalized pupils over the past couple of years. And some of you are very familiar with what equalized pupils are. Some of you may not be, but equalized pupils are one of the very important factors in developing or driving what our tax rate is. So equalized pupils are a two-year average of our student population, depending upon what grade those students are in they are weighted. So our secondary students are weighted higher than our elementary students, and our pre-K students are weighted less than our elementary students. And this is all written in statute. The state also adds weights for students that are English language learners, students that are living in poverty, as well as any students that might be state-placed. So these are all factors that all of the SUs and school districts send up to the state, and they perform the calculation and then give us what the numbers are. So as you can see, Bennington has increased a little bit over this year to 907. And Benning, or I'm sorry, Mount Anthony has been decreasing over the years, but we are leveling out. And this year, actually, next year, I'm sorry, will be 1666. So the greater that number, the lower your tax rate's going to be. But as the numbers drop, if you're not dropping your spending proportionately, then your tax rate is going to increase. So some of the figures that you're going to see on the ballot don't totally correlate exactly to the bottom line of the budget. So I just wanted to show you how we get to those numbers, so they might make a little bit more sense when you're in the booth. So we looked at the overall expenditures for the BSD, $13.7 million. We've estimated our revenue next year to be just shy of a million dollars. So that leaves us education spending of $12.8 million. So our equalized pupils are 907. We divide our Ed spending by equalized pupils, so we get that number of 14,120. Similarly, on the high school side, we do the same thing. Our expenditures, less the estimated revenue, gets us to Ed spending. Equalized pupils of 1666.79 gets us to Ed spending per equalized people of 14,118. And this is just a graphic representation showing you what our education spending per equalized people is at the BSD compared to Mount Anthony compared to the SU average, and then the anticipated state average of 15,400.
Interesting.
So you will see on the ballot article, not just the budget amount, but also what the Ed spending per pupil is. So you'll see this 14,120, you'll see the 14,118. But then you'll also see the increase or decrease in the education spending for equalized people. So these numbers are different than what the actual bottom line of the budget is, and that's why I wanted to just point that out tonight. So on the BSD side, even though the budget is increasing 3.2%, we've had an increase in equalized pupils. So that net effect is only a 1.2% increase in Ed spending per equalized people versus this current year. And on the flip side, Mount Anthony has seen a decrease in their equalized pupils. So even though the budget's decreasing 3.59%, that impact of having fewer equalized pupils brings that decrease of Ed spending per equalized people down to just 2.45% compared to this year. So this is what the ballot articles are going to look like. For BSD, we're asking for the voters to approve the expenditures of the 13.7. And then you can see that as it goes on to say that if it's approved, it will result in the 14,120, which is a 1.2% increase over the current year. Mount Anthony is a little bit different because we have to pull the CDC tuition figure out because that budget is voted on separately. So the amount that we're asking the voters to approve is without the CDC tuition, but the. the education spending per equalized pupil and the percentage impact there is the same, the full amount. And the reduction that you're seeing of that overall, so the Bennington share is fifteen point six million dollars, that's based on equalized pupil, and Bennington comprises about sixty-six percent based on equalized pupils of the Mount Anthony Union District. And then, the CDC article is looking for a budget approval of three point four million, so an overall total for the Bennington schools of thirty-two point eight million dollars. So, how do we get to our tax rate? And notice how I have this labeled as estimated, and it will remain an estimated tax rate calculation. So, we start with our Ed spending per equalized pupil, and then, we have this number, that's the property yield. Here, it is identified as ninety-eight forty-two, which is a recommendation that the Vermont Tax Commissioner gives us every year by December first, and that represents the number that they feel that the Ed Fund can support at the base rate of a dollar. So, in other words, if we were spending nine thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars per equalized pupil, our tax rate would be a dollar. But, because we're spending more than that, we have to make an adjustment, and that gives us an estimated base rate on both sides, and they're relatively close because our education spending per equalized pupils are so close. So, from there, we look at the equalized pupils and we develop the proportion. So, the elementary portion of our students in Bennington is about forty-five percent, and our secondary portion of students, about fifty-four percent. So, we apply that base rate with proportion, and we come up with a prorated rate on both the BSD and then, both the other side, the Mount Anthony side, and then, we combine them together, which is going to give us our estimated homestead rate. And then, yet another factor comes into play of the common level of appraisal. So, this is the state's way of kind of leveling the playing field to make sure everybody's properties are somewhat equalized. So, for Bennington, next year, it'll be ninety-four point sixty-two, and this is a number that is coming from tax, property tax valuation department at the state. So, dividing the common level appraisal into the homestead tax rate gives us the equalized estimated tax rate of the one point five one six one, or an increase of two point three four percent. So, that equates to twenty-three dollars for a home valued at a hundred thousand dollars, forty-six dollars for a home valued at two hundred thousand dollars, and so on. So, that, that is, or the yield, the property yield rate that gets voted on by the legislature won't happen until later on the spring. And the reason for that is they need to know what the budgets are, so then, they can determine what the Ed Fund will actually support. The preliminary budget collections that the state has done looks promising, and that that number actually isn't going to decrease, but perhaps could tick up a little bit, and if that's the case, our tax rates will go down. But, we won't know until all the budgets are voted on and whether they pass or not. So, just to give you an indication, this year, our property yield was ten thousand one hundred and sixty. They dropped it to ninety-eight forty-two for next year because of that gap in the Ed Fund. So, they're trying to make up that ground. So, we ended up in a pretty good place, thanks to the health insurance savings offsetting what could have been a pretty, pretty rough budgeting. And this is just a graphic representation of what the tax rates are comprised of. And then, with that, I can turn it over to Stuart.
Thank you, Renee.
Yeah.
That was actually most informative.
Yeah.
It's the best one we've seen yet.
Yes, it is.
You can't say it, you're too close to it.
She's practicing all day.
All day.
There's, there's actually clarity there. Not that we can, I lose it about the third slide after you showed the first, and the second, and the third, but it's really very, you know, you can almost see the line in getting from the first to the end.
I wouldn't want your job, though.
No.
No, thank you.
But, you know, it's just the whole challenge of dealing with the unknowns in the state because your health insurance, which is really a great savings, but that's sort of like a one-time shot, right?
That's a very accurate statement, it's a one-time shot.
Yeah. And then, we don't know the uncertainty of the state to coffer next year because that could even drop more, but I guess we should look at today and not be so concerned about next year.
We're looking at changes in special ed funding formulas for next year, as well as potential changes in early child care funding, which could affect our EEM, so we, we're monitoring a number of things that we're concerned about, but we're going to stay positive that this is a, this is a good budget this year.
Yeah.
So, the state, just, you know, to add a little, like, we don't know what's going to happen. So, last year, all of our budgets were passed, thankfully, and then, the legislature came up with this great idea that, hey, you've got these new health insurance plans that are going into effect, you're going to get savings because of that. So, even though your budget's passed, we're not going to give you all the money we said we're going to from the Ed Fund. So, they're shorting many of the districts this year and offset next year as well. Thankfully, we do have the savings, though, so not all districts are faring so well throughout the state.
The other question that I have before I turn it over, because I'll forget the question, if we continue to lose enrollment, say, at Mount Anthony, that's going to be more detrimental to us in the long run, isn't it? With each loss of student, that equalization gets impacted.
Correct.
So, are we, do we have any idea where that's going, or Jim?
Well, the graph she showed you looks like it's leveling off, and the ten-year projection that we had then shows that, I mean, the dip coming and then...
We have a couple of bubbles working through the elementary school and middle school, and we have a big class, I think, leaving, so it's a little cyclical, but it does look like it's leveling out.
That's the questions I can remember. Folks, do you...
I hate to even bring it up, but what is the potential impact of whatever Act Forty-Six happens to turn into for us? Does anyone have a clue?
The Secretary of Education has to submit her plans by the end of June to the State Board. That hopefully will be our first glimpse that we'll see what she's proposing.
Okay, I thought it was June, okay.
And then, the State Board has to release their master plan to the state by November.
Stay tuned.
And we're told there'll be a period of public comment and input, and we'll be able to respond to whatever it is that they propose.
Good, thanks.
You'll come.
I have one minor math question for you, and then, I guess, the second question about the performance bond, but on the equalized pupils for MAU, I think you said it was twenty-three point five million. Is that, did I get that number right?
Equalized pupils for...
The total, the budget went from twenty-five point eight to twenty-three point five, roughly?
So, that's our education spending, so I pulled that back up on the screen, so it's our budget expenditure, so our overall budget, including the CDC, of twenty-five point eight. We reduce the estimated revenue to get to our education spending of twenty-three point five million. That's when we take that number and divide it by the equalized pupils to get our equalized pupil Ed spending per equalized pupil.
Okay. So, if it's roughly fifteen point seven going on the ballot for MAU and three point four going on the ballot for CDC, that's nineteen point one, and so, that difference is all made up by equalized pupils?
It's the other districts that are part of the union. So, all of our voters and all of our municipalities are actually going to be voting on that same ballot article, which is the twenty-three point seven million dollar budget for MAU.
Okay.
But, this is just to give you an idea as to what the Bennington's portion of that twenty-three million is.
Okay, great, okay, very good, thanks. And then, I guess, maybe the more interesting question is, on the BSD side, part of the enthusiasm for the retrofit was the savings that was going to be seen, the energy savings that was going to be seen, so the performance bond would kind of start paying for itself. So, are we likely to see a good net positive effect on that next year? Do we have any data yet?
We have guaranteed savings, actually, with the contractor of a hundred thousand dollars, so if you don't actually achieve those savings of a hundred thousand dollars in our cost, they'll be writing us a check. That is basically covering our interest cost on our bond. I think when they put the windows into the...
It was with the windows that made it not truly a performance bond, and then, the Board made that decision to go forward with the window replacement project, but the buyback, payback on the windows was a very long period of time. The contractor won the board, so it was the lighting and heating part that was where the real savings was going to come.
And would that show up in the one point four million buildings and grounds number next year? Is that where that, a reduction in that number?
Not necessarily, because we've already budgeted for it this year, because we have the new boilers in place for this year, and we budgeted for it this year.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all for me.
I had a windows question as well. So, the, so the front side of the building is done, and so, then, the other, the back side, the playground side is, will be done?
Yeah, that same wing, there's a, I guess you would call it a north top and bottom and a south top and bottom sets of windows, or still the old ones.
And then, so, so at the end of, and that'll be this summer, is that the plan?
Hopefully.
Okay, all right, that's the plan, okay. And, and then, all the windows will have been replaced?
It's only, it's only going to be one section, it's going to be phased in over a couple of years, because it's going to be a couple of hundred thousand dollars to replace the rest of those.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure there are any more questions from the board.
No more questions.
Go ahead.
Mr. Zinger.
I'm good, thanks.
The great thing about this, it's CAT TVs here, you know, just they've got the slides, it would be helpful, but your narration was so clear. I hope folks take the time, and I think I will too, to follow it through again, because it does make sense if you hear the C in here on how we get to this. And thank you for the excellent presentation and the work that your staff put into getting it here tonight. This is probably, when you hear our presentations from Stu, this is a pretty good year for the town of Bennington and the school, schools that support us. So, thanks very much. Any other questions of anybody in the audience on the board? Carson?
Jim, can you just, or somebody, can you just tell me the amount that was bonded? I guess I wasn't on the board at that point. You just said the interest...
Four point four six one.
And that, I'm hoping is, includes the kind of, this is one wing of the building, you said the, the next section is coming up soon?
It's all part.
Just the window replacements. So, the bond covered all of our heat changes, so we swapped out oil burners to propane burners.
So, those future improvements aren't in that bond?
No, they'll be in, in the regular budget.
A lot of money. Yeah, it was a lot, it is a lot of money, I think that, I recognize that. Any other questions, folks, from the, yes?
Oh, in regards to the school buildings, there's always maintenance on the roofs. We always see that in the budgets all the time, it seems like always common currency, I'm maintenance minded. Usually, when you drill a roof for like ten, fifteen, twenty years, I mean, are we always going to be, is there, are we going to be doing more repairs with the continuation of the roofs, or like you said, this year, something to put on the backboard?
We have, we have two more sections at the high school that are coming to the end of their useful life. That's why our Director of Facilities feels like we might be able to push it off for another year or two. By the time we wrap those up, we'll probably need to be looking at the middle school, because that building is, you know, approaching fifteen-plus years, maybe. For the BSD, we actually have a capital improvements fund set up, so our Director of Maintenance and Facilities there is actually planning to do some roofing replacements this coming year with using money out of that fund. And one thing I should mention, too, is that there's going to be a separate ballot article for Mount Anthony, asking the voters if they would approve giving the Board the authority to take any fund balance, if there happens to be a fund balance going forward, and set money aside to establish either a capital improvements fund or a tax stabilization fund, something along those lines. So, there's a separate ballot article for that this year.
Is that just this year, or is that at something...
The way that we have it worded, it would give the, the Board the authority to make that decision on an annual basis, so it would just be a one-time vote this year.
Okay, good. Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good to have you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. Nelson?
Is this a powerpoint that we have on your website? So, if anyone really wants to see it, you can bring it up.
Sure. Yeah, I will definitely get it posted on the SU, and I can send it to the town.
That'd be great, good.
I just wonder, Jim, if you want to just briefly make the case for that last ballot question that she talked about?
Stabilization.
Stabilization. It feels to me like if you don't think about it hard, it could be the kind of thing that doesn't sound like a good idea, so what's the case for it?
As far as it allows planning, develop a multi-year capital plan and set if there's funds left over in the year, the money the Board can designate where they want it to go, and our Director of Facilities and Director of Finance and Operations can make, use that to make that master plan, which you talked about, the roofing projects, and hopefully, it won't have, you won't see spikes in the budget, it will level out that, that cost and spending over a multi-year plan.
Sort of like we've done with the town reserve funds for the large, larger capital expenses, so you don't get that real bonded joke.
So, we have one established for the BSD, but Mount Anthony doesn't have a capital improvements fund, so that's why the Buildings and Grounds budget looks so big, because he builds in the projects to the budget every year.
Good, good question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stu, would you like to lead us through?
Renee, you're gonna, are those, run me through it?
Those tents, each, one of the select board members gets a tent.
Well, our, our budget is, is at twelve point nine million dollars this year, is proposed, and this does not include the agencies that are on the ballot, and we'll see a slide later that shows you how much money the ballot agencies are asking for. It's a three point five percent increase. It's made up of about four point one million in highway funds and eight point nine million in general and fire funds. The general, we break out the fire departments because we have the rural fire district, which is a taxing entity, and the Bennington Fire Department, which is we tax for, and so, we have to show those separately in our, our budget proposals. Here's the breakdown of, of how our activities break down, police at twenty-nine percent, not surprising, highway fund at thirty-two percent. Those are our two major expenditure lines. Recreation at five percent, administration, which includes the manager's office, finance offices, Lister's office, town clerk, all of the basic administrative functions of the town at twenty-six percent, fire department at three percent, and the agencies themselves that are included in the budget, and you'll see who those are on a later slide, at five And here, we have the agencies listed. Included in the budget this year are the Bennington Free Library, the Bennington County Regional Commission, the John McCullough Library, the North Bennington Recreation, Parent Recreation, and new this year is the Bennington Rescue Squad. And the Rescue Squad was on the ballot last year and was successful at two hundred and seven thousand. One of the reasons that you'll see that our tax rate is not going up dramatically is when the Board placed them in the budget, they placed them in the budget at a hundred and fifty thousand, so there was a savings off of the general fund this particular year. The combined amount of six sixty-six to ten is up, principally because the Rescue Squad is now included there. On the other side, these are the agencies that are on the ballot. I won't go through what each one is asking for that is shown on the ballot, but there's a hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred dollars in, in question here, and these are ones that will be approved by the voters or not. Generally, the voters have approved them all pretty successfully. Planned projects, street paving, three hundred eighty-three thousand dollars this year. The select board members will know, you're probably used to something in the six hundred and ninety to seven hundred thousand dollar range for paving projects. The principal change this year is a reduction in... The principal change this year is a reduction in planned street paving, because this is the first year that the new highway facility bond, principal and interest hits. So you'll see the 252,000 dollars at the bottom there. We told the voters when they approved it, they would, we would incorporate that bond and interest, principal and interest payments within the budget without major increases. And the way to do that, of course, and the only way to do that, is through the reduction of projects. So we have a reduction in paving projects this year. We have a slight reduction in sidewalk projects, but we're also hoping that when the PFOA projects on the westerly side of the railroad right-of-way are completed, that we'll see some major paving to bring those streets back to a really good condition, and it won't necessarily be at our expense. So we're, we're counting on that and looking forward to that and working with the engineers in the state to see that that happens. Okay, Renee? What really determines our tax rate is the growth or not lack thereof in the grand list. This year, we see some growth in the grand list. We surpassed the billion-dollar mark for our grand list a couple of years ago. It has continued to grow, not perhaps as much as we might like to see it, but this year enough to help reduce the impact on the tax rate. And as Renee had pointed out, the equalized grand list, which is something that really impacts the school more than us, went up again this year. And that means that what's happening is the sales of properties is essentially coming down to meet where our assessed values are. And we have seen an increase in equalized grand list of a percentage point or so over the last five years. And what the other thing that that does is it prohibits or prevents us from having to do a reappraisal. If we stay above 80% on the equalized grand list, we are not required to do a reappraisal, and therefore, the chance of having to do a reappraisal, which is a major expenditure, is reduced every time that number goes up.
Is that, is that, we're around 94%?
We're around 94, I think 94.6 this year.
94.62, I think is the number.
Thanks.
Something like that.
94.62, yep.
Yeah, thanks.
And so here's the impact on the municipal rate. Our, our tax rate this year, which is a combined, this is the combined rate, general, highway and fire fund, will, will increase 0.9%. It amounts to just about a penny on the tax rate. Part of that is due to the fact that the Rescue Squad request was reduced in negotiations with them. And part of it is, is the fact that we scaled back on a number of levels to try to meet the select board's desire to have a relatively level-funded tax rate. And I think the staff worked very hard. I also think the board worked very hard in our work sessions to try to make that come to fruition, and I would dare say we have succeeded. Now, if the agencies are all approved, that will add another 1.3 or 1.4, 4 cents. It brings it up to 2.26% increase on the tax rate with those agencies approved. They're separate from us, and they will change what this number looks like if they're all So this is the combination that you see. Total combined tax rate, and that's estimated, of 266.89, $2.67 per 100, and it's a relatively small increase overall, when you look at the combined activities of both the school district and the town. And here's the final slide. Monday, March 5th, we have the floor meetings here at this facility. You will note the rapid-fire succession of Mount Anthony, the CDC, and the BSD. They generally go off pretty quickly, and the town of Bennington is the last on the list at 7 o'clock. So, March 6th will also be the vote, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, both here and at the North Bennington train station. And as it says, early and absentee ballots are already available and are being turned in already.
Great, Stu, great presentation as well, clear, and thanks for the work of the staff and colleagues that, you know, we, as you said, we've worked pretty hard. It's amazing how the community leaders have stepped up to try to keep this in line with our abilities to, to pay, because it's still, there's still a lot of millions of dollars out there. One of the things, this is sort of like just a passing observation, we've had a pretty good run of paving, you know, the 10 to 12 miles per year, and that's probably, or potentially impacted this year, but...
It certainly will be. From our, from what we can afford to do, it certainly will be, and, and I would, I would project that we would see that kind of a reduction over probably the next three to five years, because the way the bonds are paid off, the first five years, you see, you see a substantial drop in the original payment. It's high principle, the bond, the principal stays the same throughout the bond.
Interest.
Interest is highest in the first year, drops dramatically through year five, and will, will correspondingly raise that paving budget up as those monies come down.
I'm sure every year, the board will be looking at that component, see if there are other areas where you could, if there's a need, you could transfer it into the paving side of the equation.
Certainly.
The other thing that I think you've mentioned, it's probably very important, so the community knows that there is going to be a state paving process that is not really here.
That's a good point.
And I think it's probably a good idea just to mention that right now.
Yes. This, this coming year, and we're not entirely sure of the start date, but the state of Vermont will be paving Route 9 and Route 7 from the Old Bennington Line through Old Bennington, all the way out to the intersection, this is Route 9, the intersection of Route 279 east of town. It will be paving Route 7 from the south, just beyond the Park Lawn Cemetery, all the way north to the intersection just beyond the Chamber entryway. It is a massive undertaking, it's basically a cold plane and paving project. They replace all signs, bring all signs into compliance, they redo all crosswalks, they do drainage structures and the manhole structures, they bring them leveled with the pavement. Our responsibility is to make sure that those structures underneath the road are stable and in good condition, so we're gearing up for a fairly massive review of our, certainly our sewer manholes through that project site early this spring. That's going to be, that's going to be the hardest task, I think, for us to stay ahead of this particular project. Unfortunately, at the present time, we don't have a schedule from the state, we don't know when they plan to start, we don't know where they're starting and how they're going to be working the project. So we have been working through the plans with them, but they haven't yet been able to nail down a start date.
I know John Shanahan's not gulping yet, but you know, we're on May Day, I remember, Mayfest and other activities this summer, fall, fall, you know, it really becomes burdensome to the community, so we've got to use what capital we have, because I can remember some work done on Benmont that, you know, sort of was a challenge for you, staff, and the community, and we're trying to revitalize the town. We don't want to be making it so difficult for folks to come during this period that they get upset. And for all the work that we've done, we want to make sure we keep it in place, so somehow we've got to make, get the state to be aware of.
Well, the, the state is aware of all of the, the major events that are planned throughout the downtown. That's one of the first things they ask. The beauty for us is that, if there is a beauty in a massive paving project right through the center of your town, is that we have the opportunity for, for detours and alternate routes throughout the downtown area. Folks who traveled over Roots, Route 9, last year while they were paving in Wilmington had tremendous waits.
Yeah.
There was one lane open and, but they don't have the same opportunities that we do. We can move traffic through this community pretty, pretty carefully, but pretty easily.
But Stu, we're not considering closing down Main Street, right? We would still keep a, we would have detours, but we would also keep a lane open?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Good question.
There's two bridge projects, as you know, that's going to be taking place, one is the Route 9 Bridge and one is the Depot Street. How does that come about? Does that affect this year or next construction?
The Route 9 project is not yet on the, on the state's project list. This is the, the bridge, well, there are two projects. There's the bridge by Miller's Toll, the former Pepper Mills, is a deck replacement. Unfortunately, we're not, we were not able to push that ahead fast enough, so the state will most likely be paving over that and ultimately having to come back and replace it.
It's a waste.
We, we just couldn't get that to go fast enough. The Depot Street project will not be impacted by this particular project. They won't be coming that far off of Main Street.
Is this this year or next year?
The Depot Street Bridge project will, will be probably, I don't believe it's in our highway budget this year, that is a town project, so it'll be probably next fiscal year.
Questions for Stu? Other folks in the audience that might have a follow-up to any of this stuff? This is also on the town website.
This whole thing will be up on the website.
So I encourage the followers of Cat TV and otherwise to...
And I do want to thank Renee and her staff for lending, lending us their skill and pulling together this PowerPoint.
It was, well, good team effort, and I think that's, this tag team, I always get nervous, but since everybody's worked harmoniously, it worked hand in hand. It was a very good presentation, and also, the end result is, the community should be comfortable with the presentation and the budgets this year. Thank you very much, superintendent, Stu.
Thank you, Jim.
And staff.
I, I would just like to thank the board and for our collaborative relationship, and that really has developed, and that we do have a team approach to this, and it's, it's very successful, and we appreciate your support. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Donna. Mike? All right, we will continue.
Sit down.
Why don't we take about a five-minute break, just so everybody can be comfortable? Thanks, Donna. Anytime.
Well, yeah, it's one thing, it's one thing to, to hold traffic in intersection while the parade moves through.
Okay, we're going to reconvene. We're going to have a bit of a charter discussion relative to section four of the Town Managers' section. And what I'd like to do tonight is just hear from the Charter Review Committee members that are here to give us an overview of their discussions on this section. I don't want to really get into a lot of discussion tonight on the various bullets that, so basically I'm saying is hold your fire.
We don't have time for a lot of discussion, Tom.
Exactly, yeah, that's really, and because this is an important section as well as the Select Board, but I thought we'd get the flavor and then we can revisit. If that's all right with you folks?
Yep, it'd be great. Because you guys spent so much time on this, it'd be great to...
We thought we were done.
We love executive summaries.
And what we'll do, if it's all right, we'll, let's just hit the high points. There are three or four of them that I can see offhand, but why don't we just talk about your observation of this section and those areas that you felt might need a little more concern, both by the sub, by the committee and by the Select Board when we, we do our evaluation. And Rob, thanks, thanks for coming, thanks for coming in tonight, by the way, folks. Yes?
And just in terms of this, this section, you'll, you'll probably notice that there's, there's a lot of changes. There are only three substantive changes, however. They are to change the appointment from the indefinite term of a town manager to a three-year renewable term. And that also associated with that would be the annual review. And this essentially are things for the Select Board that we're recommending. Instead of doing indefinite for a town manager, it would be three years. Require the Select Board to do an annual review, which I understand is being done now, but this would be a requirement for the Board. And, and the other substantive change would be to also require the Board to have purchasing and bidding policies for the town manager to follow. But you'll see otherwise that there's not much change that we're asking for in terms of the town manager. And I think that what these changes are focused on is that the, the town manager is, is the administrator and we're asking for the Board to have some, I suppose, statutory requirement of reviewing the town manager, which we didn't see as built into the town manager chapter. But otherwise, the administration of the town requires the, the, the powers that are within this. So if, I don't know if the, if the, if the other members have anything more, but that's the, the bulk of what we had looked at in terms of this, not to change the position of town manager, just to have a little more oversight.
Other comments?
I'd say oversight and really it's more about communication than anything else than, trying to create more closer oversight, say, of the town manager. I think I mentioned, it might've been a month ago, anecdotally, as, as we discussed these issues and, and we shared experiences we had with talking to people about mayor and our form of government, the kind of trends that we saw that we brought to the table where people were concerned with vision and accountability in, in their town government. In, in general, I think we, it's safe to say, we thought vision resided with the Select Board. That's what you're here for. You're here to bring your vision of the town. That's what you run on and, and that's how you make your choices, your, your votes. Accountability is shared by you and the town manager. You, you both have a role in that. So the changes we're making really just speak to that, you know, the, the three-year term, I, I want to be clear, this isn't intended to create a contract with, with the town manager. We're not trying to change kind of the business relationship between the town and the town manager. This is more, so that you will, you can be more engaged. Every three years, you're, if this passes, you're going to have to cast a vote whether or not to keep the town manager. It provides opportunities that, that don't really exist right now. It will provide the opportunity for people, the members of the public, to come forward in a recognized way and share their thoughts on, on the job the town manager is doing, to tell you that. It will kind of depoliticize this as an issue because none of you will have to be the sole person who makes this motion to, to critique the town manager. No one will have to second this motion. It will be automatic. You'll simply have to raise your hands and vote to keep the town manager or not. If, if the annual performance reviews are done well and done properly, to me personally, a town manager should be here for decades because the point of the, of the review, it's not punitive, it's not supposed to be coercive, it's a way to make, to keep the Board and the manager engaged in town business. And to make sure on an, an annual basis that you're on the same page, that the manager understands the desires of the Board, that the Board can evaluate whether or not the town manager is being responsive to them. So really every three years, it, it should almost be a perfunctory vote if the reviews are, are done well. And then with the bidding, purchasing and bidding, again, to, to, to help keep the Select Board engaged in, in this aspect of town administration, make sure that the, the manager understands, you know, your visions, your desires as far as purchasing and bidding goes and it gives you a way, you know, again, to make sure you're on the same page. It, it also gives the Select Board, to develop these policies, the ability to, to express your vision of the town in purchasing and bidding. When I worked for the city of Austin in Texas at different parts of my career where I had purchasing authority, boy, the, the policies were very, very specific and you had to follow them. To put anything out for bid, you had to get like at least three bids and one of them had to be from a minority or woman-owned business. Now that added work to doing purchasing, but that was the city council expressing their view as to what they thought the, the city government should be. And they wanted to make sure minorities and women-owned businesses were, were getting a fair shake when, when the city was spending its money. Here locally, you, you could put provisions in here to, to give preference to, to locally-owned and operated businesses if you want. Now, a town manager is going to tell you that to, to put a, a social consciousness into these kind of policies is going to cost more. But, but that would be a few. So this to me is, the, the purchasing and the bidding has unlimited opportunities. It, it just depends on what Select Boards want to do with it. So I'd, I'd like to get away from this, this kind of the, the sense of oversight, accountability, like this is a way for you to keep your eye on the town manager and look at this more of ways for you to communicate and make sure that you're all on the same page as you can do the town's business.
And I hear what you're saying is that that communication is a two-way street and that's how you deal with that evaluation process on an annual basis. So the town manager, he or she, understands that, that three years is the clock's ticking and you're, if there are issues, you deal with them not at the third year, but as they come up and, and rather than waiting. One of the things that I'm hoping the next Board takes upon itself is, even before the vote on the Charter, is to revisit our appropriate policies with the town manager and the various departments to make sure, A, they exist and two, that we understand. Because a lot of times they exist and we don't really, as a Board, know if they're being followed. And frankly, we shouldn't have to know if they've been followed, just we should make that assumption and it should be an assumption that is, is recognized and if not, we'll talk about it at evaluation time. So I do feel that we do have that responsibility and I think Jim has mentioned about revisiting the, the policies next term. Those are, are good points. Lynn?
Well, I think that, Rob and Robert really covered all of it. I think the one thing that this does though is with the, the three-year term, is it does help everyone that is an elected member of the Select Board to raise their hand, assure the public that, yep, everything's going great, we're going to keep going, so we're doing this in three-year increments. And it's just a vote of, a public vote saying, yep, everything's going as it should be going. And we talked about different lengths of time and you don't want to have too short of a time because how would you ever, you know, why would someone want that job? But you want to have, you know, a, a short enough time that you, you feel like you're giving that, that extra boost of confidence every so often. But it's meant to be a positive transparency tool, not a hammer, so.
I would think that probably with the eventual succession, that hiring that next town manager, he or she, would have a greater comfort level in relocating to Bennington if they had some idea of the, the nature, the length of the contract and, and what they would be faced with. Right now it's a little bit nebulous and I, if I were a professional town manager, I would be hesitant under our existing Charter to just move my family here.
And to let you know, we didn't invent anything new here. This was, you know, part of the research we did. There are other towns in Vermont that have this kind of policy. Virgens, I, I think they do this once a year. They, they vote on their town manager once a year. We thought, well, a year's pretty short. We thought five years might be too long, so, you know, consensus and compromise. We ended up with three, so.
What are some of the other communities you remember? Are there...
The ones I've got here from the minutes, Winuski, Winuski, they agree upon a term. Ennisburg Falls is a three-year term. Hartford is a three-year term. And in Virgens, it was once a year. Except where we got that from.
Did you get a chance to look at our, the job description for the town manager's position?
Yes.
In, in the context of the Charter? Because it refers to our existing, our existing job description refers to our town manager as the CEO and Chief Financial Officer. That's how it's articulated. Under the context of the Charter and the job description, do you think there's any inconsistencies? And maybe it's not a fair question to ask tonight.
I could say that there was some, some discussion. I know Michael Keen especially had, had talked about the, the view of the manager as a CEO. But frankly, although we had the, the job description with us and I know we all reviewed it, that wasn't really much of the discussion that we had in terms of the, the language of this particular section and any changes that we had looked for. I think it was, quite frankly, a lot of it was, we thought, well, that's the Select Board will be doing that in terms of what the vision for the, for the manager would be in terms of a job description and, and so forth. So we did not really discuss the context of the language of this Charter with the job description as, as we have now.
Because you hear Robert suggest that it's really the vision of the Select Board, which is administered by the town manager. When I see a CEO being defined as a job, I see that CEO as having some element of driving the vision or at least participating. And I, I think that's probably what happens in our town, but it's, I'm not sure if we can codify that or we just deal with the communication of that.
And I would say that most of our discussions centered around the Charter as written and what changes we wanted to make. And most of our discussions centered around that the seven Select Board members are elected on their vision, their campaign vision for the town and that the, the town manager was making that come to life was more how our discussions went.
That's helpful.
And we'll have a chance to get into the nitty-gritty on this, but, but that first line that says the town manager shall be the Chief Executive Officer of the town, we, we could tweak that.
Yep, exactly. I don't want to get...
As we decide more and more what we, what we think that town manager should be if, if we go that route. But, you know, I'd be interested to know a little bit if, if I can jump in.
Please, no, I'm...
I'd be interested to hear a little bit more about, I know you had a number of forums, open public forums where you discuss different forms of government. And I can see from the minutes that you spend a lot of time kind of discussing the mayoral issue. And I wonder if you'd just walk us through a little bit some of the, how you dealt with some of the spectrums of possibilities there.
I, I just say to begin with, we had meetings every Wednesday and there were always citizen comment period and no one came in talking about forms of government or mayoral system, form of government versus town manager, Select Board system. We also had a couple of evening forums. There were some limited conversation there and we had Jim Barlow, the attorney for the town, come and do a presentation explaining the different forms of mayoral forms of government, a strong mayor versus a, we say a ceremonial mayor, form of government, in which towns had those. So we did have a lot of opportunity for public input. I think we were a little surprised at how little we got.
Yeah, I more meant what was the arc of your conversation as you started to kind of think about it? What, what were the, clearly you spent a lot of time thinking about it and where you landed is essentially on a town manager, Select Board format.
Yeah, it, it's difficult to, to, to sum up that, that discussion. I can't impart because the one night when they had the most discussion, I left early. But I, I want to say that although the committee, I think clearly we weren't favoring as a committee, a change in the government, I want to say that it might've been seven or even eight different reasons from the seven members on, on the Board for why that was. And at, at least for my part in terms of looking at this chapter, in terms of the town manager versus a mayoral form of government, at, at least as, and I'm actually jumping into the petition here, but at least as how the petition that is going to be voted on is presented, it's just changing the word town manager in this chapter to mayor. I know there's some discussion on that, but that's how we looked at this is, this is what the administration of the, of the town would be and it wouldn't be very different. The only difference in terms of the system of government was whether or not it would be elected or, or appointed. And I, I think generally the appointment of the administrator was what we, in terms of the powers that are detailed in the Charter, as well as the powers that are understood in the, in the statute, I assume to be something where this is a professional that, that needs the expertise versus an election. How you separate that apart is, is a bigger, is a bigger discussion, but in terms of how we were looking at this chapter, I think that's where we were focused on, the professionalism of what we want from the town manager as an administrator.
Yeah, I would say, I think the, the first time we, we had a, a major discussion on this, a consensus formed pretty quickly that we did not, we weren't going down the road of changing the way we govern our town. There was, there was no consensus in favor of say, a strong mayor. And there is a consensus that the, the council, manner of government is the best, most effective form of government for this town and, and towns of this size. So, so where do you go from there? Okay, well, we have all these anecdotes. You've got vision and accountability. Okay, so how can we deal with that? Accountability, we dealt with in the town, section on town manager. Vision, we, we touched on the Select Board and that's our recommendation to make the Chair the head of government for ceremonial purposes. And believe it or not, that was not a quick or easy discussion and it wasn't even unanimous. That, that as a topic, it, it sounds innocuous, but it really wasn't. So instead of trying to uproot everything and change everything, everything about the way we, you know, the town is run, we're trying to say, how, how do we, how do, how do we accommodate a desire for more vision coming from the Select Board? Well, what do we have already in place? Well, we have a chairperson. Okay, that's, you know, first among equals. Okay, can we do something with that position? So we're trying that. And I've said before... And I've said before, some people might see that as a problem. Some people might see that as an opportunity. It is up to whoever the select board chooses as the chair. There aren't a lot of nuts and bolts to it, to say, you have to do this, you have to do that. We want to leave it up, see what your vision is. And, you know, maybe that can be expanded on in the future. But we didn't see anything wrong that required a radical change in the way the town is run.
It's interesting to hear your perspective. And Lynn, looks like you have something.
I just wanted to add one thing. And Rob touched on this as well, but I think part of the other conversation came in that a professional town manager should have a lot of experience for the very, very specific, detailed duties of this role to administer a town. And so we thought, instead of having a mayor, which may or may not have that experience and education, and I know Michael Keen talked a lot about, well, the people in this town that might have that education and experience pretty much already have jobs. And would you have a deep enough bench of people that really would be qualified to be in that role? And I thought that was a good point. So we thought strengthening the accountability of the person who is, who you're already vetting to be the town manager, and then having the accountability there, the ability to dismiss with 90 days, the annual reviews, the three-year terms, would all strengthen that position of town manager. So that's where we all felt. We also felt like the charter already had a provision for changing the town form of government, which is the petition. And if someone wanted to do that, they could. And in fact, someone did.
Yes.
But we didn't feel like, we felt like what we had was definitely a much stronger position to be in than a mayor form.
Yeah. I love the approach of going at it with vision and accountability. And I think I heard you say communication in there, too. At one of our forums, Liz Coleman, the former president of Bankton College, spoke, I thought, very eloquently on the need for the select board to pretty much hit on those three things. She was really talking a little bit more about communication, but I think wrapped into that for her was accountability and vision, too. So I wonder if there were ideas that you kind of left on the cutting room floor? Were there things that you came close to as you were approaching vision and accountability and communication and ways to increase those with the select board? Were there ideas that you almost got across the line but rejected? Or did you, did none come to mind?
Well.
Well. Trust Robert to answer that one.
We didn't get anywhere close to it, but I'll take this opportunity to say that as we expanded what we expect of the chair in the charter, I would have liked to have seen a provision made to give the chair a small annual budget to use in pursuit of the new duties that we're assigning to that role. And it'd be great if the chair could also have access to some town resources, perhaps some staff time, the copying machine, you know, maybe an office, something like that, to give that position, you know, to kind of fund our vision of it.
That's interesting.
I'd just like to say one other thing. It's not exactly an answer to your question, Don, but it was interesting that all of the members of the Charter Review Committee came in not knowing where we landed on a mayor versus town manager form of government. And we all, over the few weeks, just kind of all landed on the, there's really no reason to make that change. We'd rather strengthen what we have.
Yeah, use the structure that we've got to improve that.
But I can't think of anything else that got left on the cutting room floor.
No.
My only addition to that, and it wasn't a very long discussion, as I recall, is that there's a provision where the town manager essentially has to be apolitical. There's no, there was some discussion about that and whether or not that was actually fair to the town manager in some ways. We didn't spend a lot of time on it, but we did essentially look at that, see if that's something that we could change. And then ultimately, I think we all understood, at least I certainly did, is that, you know, that's there for a reason to try to take that as an administration position, as much as it does work, but it's in the charter for that reason.
And I think, you know, talking about Section 4 tonight, the town manager, I think it really dovetails with the Section 3 and the select board. I think there's this communication and vision and those things. They really have to be hand in glove. Maybe as we look at the charter itself, and I understand where the committee's coming from, we'll have to make sure that we're comfortable with the charter as it is and how it might be run out. But I mean, that's going to take more discussion about the role of the select board in, not the management, but the, how is the vision carried out? Because we can get into a role of micro, managing the manager's office, and that would be self-defeating to the manager that is trying to do what he or she's been contracted for. But at the same time, we have to have enough interest in what's happening there to ask the right questions at the right time.
And I would say we very consciously wanted to stay away from that kind of micro-management. You know, we try not to put too many nuts and bolts into this. Like I say, we weren't really looking for oversight, looking more for communication between the two.
Other members, before we get too deep into the dialogue.
Sorry.
Gene?
Nope, I don't have anything.
We got, I just want to make sure. Okay, go ahead. Yes. What's the point of it all? It's exercise and trying to. What? No, basically, the charge of the commission was to examine the charter, to make our form of government the best possible, so that we get the most quality at the best price value that we can get. And that's what the charter is. It's our governing document. And it's time, it was time to look at it again. And that's why we.
It's required by the state, I believe. All right? It's due every 10 years?
It's required by the charter.
So the reason we're doing this is not.
It will be when we get to that chapter.
And it was not just an exercise, just for an exercise.
Right. And the language in the charter, for as far as reviewing the charter goes, it says, we're supposed to review the charter with an eye towards improving the operation of town government. That's the universal charge. And so that's the reason why we look at it.
And as far as, it was just coincidental that this mayor petition came out at the same time. So when you were saying, is this a free advertisement? We were just giving the commission report, the charter commission report, it just happens to be at the same time that the mayor petition was signed.
Yeah, by the way, the committee's work charge came before the petition.
Right, we started before, yeah.
So you understand, it wasn't the petition that drove the subcommittee or the committee. It was the committee that drove the review of the charter. And that petition happened to come in during the time the committee was looking at it. But as it says, the preamble, "The charter of the town of Bennington reflects concern to improve the quality of life for all people and to improve the operation of town government." That was the addition that the committee has suggested. So this is not just a commercial. It's an effort.
A big one at that, in this committee. A tremendous amount of time, energy into this. Thank you for that.
If there are no other questions, why don't we save for additional discussion? Because I think there will be as we move along. Really appreciate your entire committee, but your tolerance.
Is this true? Why? Why has all these things happened?
I'm not sure I can.
What was it up to when, with what happened to him?
You know.
Why wasn't more done about it?
Yeah. The, you know, I'm not sure I can answer your question because the question probably doesn't have an answer. Frankly, I'm not even sure what, why, and how you can ask a question like that, much less expect an answer. Okay?
It's true.
Yeah. Is there anything else?
People didn't believe what you guys turned out. And why didn't anybody, you know, want to?
Rose, as I mentioned.
I don't think this dialogue, this is not particularly helpful, but, you know, I'm not sure that this is particularly helpful, dialogue or exchange. If you would like to visit offline, I'd be happy to do that. But I don't think your question really gives us enough an opportunity to provide any kind of meaningful answer.
How far through this? How many more chapters do we have to do? How many more?
Seven or eight.
So.
And take 10. Some we didn't do anything on.
So we'll keep going with this process, keep reviewing the charter committee's changes.
Because we hope to warn this and have it voted on in June.
Well, as long as it's taken us to go through your work, I can only imagine it must have taken a long time to do the work, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If they didn't make changes or significant changes to those chapters.
We can get there.
Yeah, instead of making them come if they don't want to.
Yeah. I think that the, oh, the last three chapters are.
That's what I mean, do you put them all on one agenda so they can kind of call good?
Yeah, get them here early and so, I agree.
I mean, this was a big one, but especially if Donna left long questions like that.
I think it's a really good idea that they come.
Oh, yeah.
Even if it's a very, even if it's an easy.
I meant more than one chapter at once.
Oh, okay. Okay, I thought you were saying they didn't need to come.
No, not at all, no.
It allows the community another opportunity to hear their insights, which we don't even have, because we weren't there. So I find this incredibly educational to hear what they say.
Yeah, I imagine multiple chapters.
I've got to say one thing.
Go ahead, Jim.
This is, Rose, as I've said before in other meetings, we can't talk about the specifics with respect to the town manager because it's a personnel issue. And frankly, it hasn't definitively been concluded. And that's really, I'm being as frank, and I think the rest of the board will back me up on this, but it's a personnel issue and it, if we were to talk about this in greater depth, it would expose the board and the town to a great deal of liability. But I just want to be clear about that. Any objections to that?
No, I think it's probably as well stated as any. We'd love to say exactly what you said, and I don't think it bears any more discussion. Liquor license renewals?
Yes, we have eight. All of them are renewals, so I'll just circulate that for signature.
That help you out, Rose?
Shall I jump into the manager?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking for my signature.
I have two action items for you tonight, both relatively straightforward. Blue Cross Blue Shield amended their health insurance plan this year, the plan that we subscribe to, by increasing some of the deductibles, changed a little bit our reimbursement plan, which we do through a third-party payer. And that does require a resolution adoption by the board, and you can adopt the resolution and authorize the manager to sign the document. But that does, Blue Cross Blue Shield is requiring this.
Do we need a motion or just?
Just a motion to waive the reading of the resolution, authorize the manager to sign.
A motion to that effect?
A motion to waive the reading and authorize.
Second?
Second.
For the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify aye.
Aye.
Seven in favor. Yep, go ahead, Stu.
The next thing is, it's the last of our capital equipment purchases, and it does require your signature on the three pages, the three documents that I included in the packet. This, too, would require a motion to waive the reading of the resolution, accept the note, and sign, and it does require board signatures on three different pages. And I did include at the back of this, the line item calculation showing how we arrived at this amount. We did anticipate $228,500 in principal payments this year. Current payments totaled $183,400. And there was a new single-axle dump truck at $22,200 anticipated. This was anticipated to cost $22,900. It came in at $24,200, but the difference is not significant enough to place any strain on the budget.
And this was basically the completion of approved action item on last year's approval and vote by the town.
Exactly.
All we're doing is actually.
Just clarify that one more time. I mean, this is Beal 4. This is not us right now.
Exactly, it's before you came on board.
This is not.
Yeah, exactly. So it was the 2018.
Yeah.
The 2018.
RJ wouldn't have been getting a new one if I was on it.
1718 budget. Is that right?
So do I have?
Waive the reading and the, could I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, signify aye.
And those are the only action items I have. I note for the public's knowledge that the, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, but the investigation into the salt sand shed, wetlands rules violation continues. We have not heard anything from the state of Vermont as of today. And we don't know exactly where that investigation is. I do note that the state released a finding or its opinion on the bar engineering study that was performed under St. Gobain's auspices on those properties east of the railroad tracks. The state came out fairly strongly in saying that they disagreed with the findings. There are two air models that are in dispute. One produced by bar engineering for St. Gobain, the other produced by the state of Vermont and its investigations. And conversations will be continuing between St. Gobain and the state on this, but differences of opinion are substantial.
From what I understand, the state was not at all happy with the report.
No, they were not.
On the St. Gobain, in favor of us?
Yes, in favor of us. And that's all I have.
We're going to be having an executive session relative to litigation that's pending. I do need a motion to go into executive session for that purpose.
What about other business?
I'm sorry, other business. We could come out and do that, but it's good I did do it before we do it, because we'll lose our audience. Other business before we go into executive session.
Which end do you want?
He can't even hold it.
Go ahead.
You don't get a turn.
I can't, you're right.
He wants to do other business. I told him, I'm sorry. The promise is weird. Go ahead.
All right, can I go first?
Please, you're first, then maybe last.
You're the only one.
I want to tell you that I've been in part of a group that wants to reestablish a drug court here in Bennington. Oh, a drug court here in Bennington. We did have one during the years 2002 to 2006, and it morphed into a domestic violence court and then sundown. Dick Sears has been a part of this. Representatives Alice Miller, Bill Botso, Mary Morrissey, and Tim Corcoran were in attendance today, as well as Chief Doucette. And here's the, it's, this is going to be an ongoing process, but what we see is that it makes better fiscal sense, rather than throwing people, incarcerating people. And we're not talking about big-time drug dealers, you know? But, and here's the fiscal sense that it makes. You're not busting up families. You're not bringing social services into it, kids going into foster care, which is a tremendous expense. People aren't losing their jobs. They're not losing their properties, their apartments, and their homes. So this, it was a really fruitful talk today, and all parties concerned, all of our representatives and Senator Sears and Paul have agreed to make this a continuing conversation, so I'm really very hopeful. Secondly, and lastly, I want to congratulate the Mount Anthony wrestling team for the 30th consecutive state championship. consecutive state championship. And that is not just a U.S. record, that's a world record. And I spoke with both the town manager and the chief of police today, and we have a parade scheduled this Sunday at about noon. The starting point for the wrestlers and family members will be at the firehouse at approximately 11:00 a.m., and it will culminate at the high school, where the chief of police will act as master of ceremonies. I've been in touch with Senators Sanders, Leahy, and Congressman Welch's office, who have promised me that there will be remarks to be made, and as well as remarks, some of our Montpelier delegation will be in attendance as well. And as Tom can attest, when we did this five years ago, it was really meaningful. And it was stirring. The kids and the coaches and the families were really moved. And there's an additional surprise that I won't tell you about, but any, and it's a good one, it really is.
Thanks for the assurance.
Yeah.
He's waited all night for this.
Oh, I have.
Should have other business at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. But anyway, I invite any and all board members to participate in this. You could read one of the senators' letters, or the congressman's letters, or any of the other remarks from our delegation. And it's just, you know, everything about the wrestling team is what's really good about this town. These kids commit themselves to physical excellence, they have to keep up the grades, and they have to stay out of trouble. And the thing that really always moves me at these events is that we honor the parents who really make this possible, and they make such sacrifices for their children, and without those sacrifices, we wouldn't have the 30 years of success that we've had. So that's the end of my remarks today.
Thanks very much.
Can I add on to that?
Sure.
I did hear today, congratulations for Brian Kuhn as Vermont's co-head coach of the year.
Absolutely.
That's right. That's a great charge for him in his second year as head coach, so it's a great honor. So congratulations, Brian.
Absolutely.
Our girls' basketball team's secured the sixth seed in the playoffs, and they have a home playoff game Wednesday at 7:00. So not to steal from your fireside chat, but they could use, it's against Brattonboro, and, you know, they're a rival, we've beaten them twice this year. Both games, I think, have been within two or three points, so it's really tough to beat a team three times, so they'll need the home...
Well, you know, going...
7:00 o'clock.
Yeah, go to the basketball game.
Going forward, Chad, you know, we've, I think that girl sports have been overlooked, and, you know, we've concentrated on the wrestlers, and it's time the girls got a show of support here.
They've done tremendous this year, new coach in A.J. Marhar this year, taking over from Coach Slemm from last year, and they've just done a tremendous job, really exciting team to watch. And if you haven't seen them yet, you know, you have your opportunity, could be the last, depending on what other seats happen, but Wednesday at 7:00.
Carson?
I had two things, not to steal Jim's thunder. Southern Vermont College basketball team won in recent days as well, that was in the paper today. And then I'm going to need some help from fellow select board members to give details, but we're welcoming to Prospect Mountain Ski Area the nationals for the snowshoe championships. And I don't know the league or the division, but we can all comment on it, it's going to hopefully bring, I know it'll bring a lot of athletes to the community, and they're working in conjunction with a few different organizations, the Bennington Chamber, Bennington Area Trail System, and please, others who are involved, to comment.
Yeah, it's, yes, it's the March 9th, 10th, 11th, and actually, the Bennington Downtown Alliance is organized, like John has been up and down the street, people are planning events downtown, staying open late.
Got some snow now.
Yeah, but there is, yeah.
Contrary to, looking in Bennington, there is, through the hard work of, and I will like to mention, Tim Van Orton's been up there daily, working to shovel extra snow onto the track, but Woodford, a few days ago, got snow when we got rain, and through pictures today, it looks like it's going to be fine, but definitely think snow for the next week or two.
Yeah, but they will be coming into downtown on Friday night, because that's to sign up and get their, you know, their bibs, yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of great groups working together, and I didn't want to pretend that I knew them all, so thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah, great, fantastic, I love it.
Town meeting, Monday night, vote all day Tuesday.
And then there's that, that little detail.
Don't forget.
Okay, I need the motion to go into executive session now to discuss a litigation matter?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, all in favor? Aye, we're in executive session, let's move right into it.